Welcome to the city. I'm Anthony Wilson, the Public Information Officer for the City of San Angelo. And joining us today is a familiar face, our Councilman from District 3, Harry Thomas. Councilman, thanks for being with us.
Appreciate you making the offer, Anthony.
Well, of course, we're here in Fort Concho, which is in your district. And of course, you were a longtime Fort Board Member. We want to give a special shout out to Fort Concho Manager Bob Blueheart for building us a roaring fire to keep us warm here in the barracks today.
Well, I guarantee you it would be a little tough if we didn't have the fire.
It is pretty chilly today. So, Councilman, you've now served almost two years, as I said, as the District 3 Councilman. What do you know now about the job that you didn't know when you first began it?
I would say that the phone rings more often than I expected it to. Citizens feel comfortable about having a conversation with me about almost any subject, and most of those I can help on the phone or by just a quick email to city staff. So, I'm learning every day still on certain things within the community, on what we can do and what's really something new for a citizen.
How would you describe the learning curve? Has it been pretty sharp, or has it just been sort of a steady incline the entire time you've been in office?
You know, Anthony, I probably had an advantage over a lot of people because I spent about four years in the audience. So, I knew a lot of the subjects. But it has, but it's pretty steady, I would say. There are weeks go by where I'm really not doing anything new, not learning anything new. And then there are weeks like last week where I had four or five items that I work was not quite familiar with.
You mentioned you did attend a lot of meetings and you spoke at a lot of meetings as an audience member. What's that like, being up at the council dais, making the decision, talking about issues versus being an interested citizen in the audience who's doing that?
Well, I guarantee you, there are times when being on that side of the table really is an interesting thing. Those citizens that come to the microphone typically have, you know, an interest in the city and really want to make the city better. But in the same token, sometimes there are, there's information there that they don't quite understand or that they don't quite have accurate. So, from my perspective, it's always nice to have a citizen come to the microphone, but sometimes they're not fully educated on a subject. And that makes, sometimes makes the public think that the council may not be always making the decision that's right. So, it's difficult sometimes.
You mentioned that you get a lot of phone calls, and you're very active in the community, both at the council and outside of your role as a council member. When you're out and about, what are the issues, or even the phone calls that you get, what are the issues that people are generally talking to you about?
Well, most of the time, it's things that we're in the process of handling, streets, water, sewer lines. Those things are typical. Occasionally, I'll get somebody that wants to know something about code compliance or animal control. Sometimes it's specific to their particular neighborhood, what can we do, whatever it is. But overall, most of the time, it is, it is those street issues that we've got a plan for, and I'm sure we're going to talk about that later.
So, the questions that you get or the comments that you get, would you describe them more as micro in nature about maybe their particular neighborhood versus bigger-picture issues?
Well, in some cases, you know, people are interested in what goes on in San Angelo, but they're also very interested in what goes on in their particular neighborhood. So, a lot of those questions initiate by, hey, have you looked at this street? Or have, do you know the situation in my neighborhood? And so, as we have that conversation, and then that conversation grows to larger items within the community. But typically, it starts with a small item within their own neighborhood.
The council, of course, has its top five priorities, and we're going to talk about some of those in a moment. But what are a couple of things outside of those that you're hoping to accomplish during the rest of your term?
Well, really, we want to, we want to get this Avenue P drainage issue worked on. And very shortly, we're going to have a town hall meeting where I think we've got, finally got a solution to that. We're 19 months into my particular tenure as a councilman, and that was one of my main priorities to begin with. Of course, we're going to start on the Bell Street project this spring or early summer. That's probably number two. So, those two things really are the ones that I want to make sure we accomplish. Getting a handle on animals in the city is also key. There's almost every day, as I traverse this community, I see dogs running somewheres. And I know that animal control is working very, very hard to make that happen. With the partnership that they've got with PAWS now, it allows them to get more people on the street to try to do that. I don't think the citizens are still fully aware of the ordinances that we put in place a couple of years ago, what it has to do with animals and licensing and microchipping and all of those things that goes on. And so, in some cases, it's a matter of education.
You talked about Avenue P, and you talked about Bell Street. Those are things that have been long in the works of finding solutions to those particular problems, both of which are in your district. How do you explain to people about why it's taken so long to get where we are with Avenue P and with Bell Street?
Well, you know, two things. And one of those was an education from my standpoint. As I worked 40 years in the business world, sometimes it's difficult for me to have enough patience to put these projects through. Avenue P was a very, very difficult one. We had what we call, what we thought was a solution to begin with. That didn't work out. Citizens wanted us to take another approach. And by doing that, then we had to negotiate with several property owners in order to acquire the land for the drainage project, for the detention ponds. And that took a long time. Sometimes, when you negotiate with somebody that owns property, they think that the city has all kinds of money. And it's very, very difficult sometimes for them to realize that, hey, in the best interest of the city, we've got to take care of all the citizens, not just one section. So, Bell Street's another example. There were a lot of issues with Bell Street, some of which were, as we had tried to acquire the, some of the property in that particular area, we found out that those property lines went all the way into the street in some cases. And as we go through and do that, and of course, we thought we had a solution that we were going to be able to start last fall. And as it turned out, by doing that street in phases was not the best thing. So, as we've gone back now, hopefully, within the next 30 to 60 days, will we go back to contract with that. And we'll have a contractor that'll be able to do all of it. But it's still a long-term project. That's still three years out once we begin it. So, it's very, very difficult sometimes.
How confident are you that we finally are at a place where Avenue P and Bell Street are going to be remedied?
Well, I will tell you this. I feel confident enough that I think the citizens will allow me to run again next year, in '19. I feel confident enough that both of those projects will be far and off along. Possibly even the Avenue P situation will be nearly complete. But it'd be far enough along in there that the citizens say, well, he actually did something. And so, from my perspective, I've been having conversations with the city manager and the city staff almost every month on both of those particular projects so that we can get them at least started and have a completion date somewhere on the calendar.
You just referenced being fiscally responsible and very mindful of how you spend taxpayer dollars. This year's budget holds the line on spending with three exceptions, and that is that we hired more firefighters, we hired more police officers, and we did give pay raises to all city employees, including those civil servants. Why did you support the proposal to add firefighters and police officers?
Well, first of all, public safety is almost number one in everybody's mind. The real issue sometimes, when you have that conversation with citizens, is they want to make sure that this city is protected and we take care of first responders in every way we can. Now, the unique thing about that is, when you sit down and have one-on-one conversation, is they want to make sure that that happens, but they don't want to see a tax increase either. So, it's very, very difficult. But I will say that, you know, public safety has got to be at the top of the list. As we look at this particular community, now that we exceeded 100,000 people in population, that brings some other challenges to the first responders. And we want to make sure that we take care of those individuals.
And when you talk about taking care of individuals, why did you support the move to raise the pay for all city employees?
Well, I tell people all the time, I said, you know, you tell me that you want me to support the first responders. I said, but what about that individual that's in the middle of that ditch full of water in the middle of December because you've got a water leak and nobody's got water in that area? I said, that's just a prime example to me. Or that individual that's treating your water so that it's safe coming to your house. I said, so, all people that work for the city need to be, we need to make sure that they, they're taken care of. And so, there's examples like that all over the city. When you've got 900-plus employees, you gotta make sure that you're doing what's right for each and every one of those individuals.
And why did you think it was important to limit any sort of spending increases just to those three priorities?
Well, you know, you've got to make sure that you, that you don't go out there and use a lot of money that you don't have. And this will get into one of your next questions, what it has to do with the tax rate. But the bottom line is, is you have a certain dollar amount each year that you can use that comes basically from your property tax. This community is a little bit unique because we are somewhat isolated from a lot of other communities. And this is probably another question that you'll be asking in a little while. Sales tax in this, in this particular community is very, very important. And so, between the property tax and the sales tax, you still only have a limited amount of dollars that you can use. Those priorities being for police and fire and raises for the city employees makes it difficult to look at some of the other things that you might want to do. So, those things now become priorities in future years.
You mentioned the sales tax, and sales tax collections are up this year compared to the last few years. Do you already have in mind some ways that you might want to prioritize spending some of those dollars moving forward?
Well, certainly, what we want to do is catch up on a few projects from the last two years that we haven't been able to, been able to do. But there are some things in the community. We want to make sure that we've got enough equipment for all of the people to do their job, whether that's trucks for street and bridge, or whether that's equipment for people working water or sewer, whatever the case may be, or just people even in city hall. There are things that you've got to have. Communications, for example, firefighters will be coming to the council in the near future because of some of their communication equipment is somewhat antiquated. You've got to stay up to, stay up to speed with all your technology. So, your IT people need to make sure that we've got what we need to do. There are a lot of items out there that we'd like to do. Some of those are on the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and some of those basically are just day-to-day that we've got to find the dollars to take care of.
You just referenced the Capital Improvement Plan, and right now, we're soliciting public input as to what should be the priorities when it comes to San Angelo's big needs, capital improvements. Why is that input from the public important as, from a council perspective, in trying to determine what the priority should be and how to go about working those into the budget?
Well, you know, if you don't have input from someplace else, it's going to be very, very difficult. You've got seven people up there trying to make a decision on where those capital dollars should be utilized. And just like everything else in the city's budget, capital dollars are really, there's just a bare minimum of them that can be used. But citizens' input makes it very, very easy to say, okay, this is a priority, not only from the city staff or the council, but a lot of the citizens are going to do that. Then we've got to sit down and figure out what we can do and the timeframes of going to do it. Some of the input that you're probably going to get, and I have to say, Anthony, we did a good job so far this year. We've been getting a lot of input. A lot of citizens are interested in looking at what we're doing. But the thing that really we need, we need to continue to take a look at is all the drainage issues all over the city. And a number of those are on the Capital Improvement Plan. We know that we're going to take care of roads, water lines and sewer lines. Those are always out there. But those other things that we want to do, those things that impact quality of life are also important to people. So, we need to make sure that we continue to solicit input and then listen to the citizens and prioritize those things as we go forward.
You mentioned the tax rate. It remains at 77.6 cents where it's been for the last four years. Why was it important in your mind to maintain that tax rate exactly where it is?
Well, two reasons. First of all, when, when one of the other taxing entities had to raise their particular rates, and of course, I heard from citizens all the time as I, during that timeframe, why'd you raise tax rates? I said, whoa, 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 whoa. You know, the thing is, that the city has held the line on that. It's important to me because we do not want to burden taxpayers any more than is necessary. You know, get two other taxing entities from San Angelo's standpoint, and both of those entities really are looking hard at what they can do for the citizens. So, I'm going to be interested in staying with the tax rate the way it is right now. I know there's some proponents that said, hey, we've got to take care of all these priorities. But I'm very seriously want to make sure that we stay where we are and see if we, there's not a way that we can't grow that, that amount of money by the number of buildings and the amount of homes that are being built in San Angelo.
Water and streets seem firmly cemented as San Angelo's top priorities. What are you going to be looking to happen or pushing to happen when it comes to water?
Short-term, we're going to look for additional water supply, which means that we're going to probably expand the Hickory well field. And that's something that probably will, will be taken a look at in the next two or three months. Along with that, we'll have to expand the treatment of that particular water. Fortunately, people that put together the treatment plant had foresight enough to build extra space in there. So, it's just a matter of putting in the filter systems in order to do that. Continuing to look for outside water sources other than Hickory is going to be a priority. And I would like to see before, in my lifetime, before I die, that we take a serious look at updating wastewater and also the water treatment plant. A water treatment plant is a 1920's plant. So, very shortly, will be 100 years on that particular plant. And we work very, very hard to make sure that that water is safe. But the bottom line is, is if we had a 21st century water plant and a 21st century wastewater plant, things could be operated at a reduced overall cost. And so, for me, I'd like to see those things happen.
As you know, the city council has also approved a 10-year, $80 million plan to rebuild San Angelo's worst streets, including Bell Street, which we just talked about a moment ago. And over the summertime, we completed the third year of an eight-year cycle when it came to maintaining every city street. And a new asphalt recycler, recycler has been acquired to smooth streets before they require reconstruction. Do you think there's anything more that needs to be done when it comes to San Angelo's streets, or now is it just a matter of just staying the course?
Well, we really just need to make sure that we stay with what that plan is. Stay with it. Don't let anybody alter that particular plan. We've got, we've got to make sure that we stay with it. Now, the thing we also got to do is, we got to continually educate the citizens. They want to know why it takes so long. Bell Street, for example. MLK was a very, very big success story. And the reason we started there was because we were getting some additional money. There were some grant applications. But see, that's the type of thing that will be all over the city. We'll have those reconstruction streets as we go forward. We'll have those maintenance on an eight-year plan as we do it. And I will tell you, this asphalt recycling machine that we've got is a very big bonus to this particular city. And I know it costs a lot of money, but the payback on it will probably be very, very short, less than a year on it. Because they're going to be able to go in the streets and redo those particular streets from a mill and pave type situation where they wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do it in some others without a contractor coming in.
You know, it's interesting to me with the MLK project that you just mentioned, and it does seem to be a big success. People have wondered why it takes so long to rebuild a street. And I don't know that they fully appreciate all that goes into that, especially when you're replacing utility lines.
Well, when you, when you get into that type of thing, first of all, you've got to tear the street completely up. For example, the plan is, on Bell Street, when we start on it, is we're going to do one and a half at a time. We're going to move the water lines out from underneath the street, which makes very, very big sense to me. So, that we put it in the easement area so that if you have an issue with a water line, you can do it without, redo it without tearing the streets up. And we're going to be putting in sewer lines that will have 50, 60-year lifespan on it, state-of-the-art sewer lines. But you've got to replace all the base material. And that's all got to be done, certified, compacted. There's engineering specifications that you've got to do. You know, road maintenance and rebuilding roads is something that I did with Goodyear for a number of years. So, I think it's, you know, it's, there's a lot that goes into those types of things. And in order to keep the streets open, you're going to have, you're going to do one lane at a time, one side of the street at a time. And so, when we start, I know the citizens are going to say, oh, my gosh, this is going to take a long time. Well, that's a three-year project. And I know that once we actually go out there and start the project, the phone calls that I've been getting about when you're going to start, within six months, I'm sure I'm going to go, when are you going to finish?
I'm sure that's right. One of your other priorities is improving economic, or excuse me, development processes to make sure they're streamlined as possible. Not too long ago, the Planning and Development Director briefed the council on how those timelines have been compacted when it comes to getting a building permit and getting an inspection dramatically in some cases. Is there more that you think can and should be done to streamline development processes?
Well, I think any team that you've got a specific process, you always have to take a look at that on a regular basis and see where you can tighten up things. How can you make it better for the citizens, for those people, your customers, when they're coming into that? I would say that we've made tremendous progress in the last two years. I'm sure that we've still got some areas that we can improve on. One of the things I think that we're finding today is, those contractors that do business with the city on a regular basis are feeling comfortable that we're making progress, that we're doing things the right way, that we're going to do that. Where we find a little bit of rub is when that citizen comes in and wants to build a fence or a building or do some improvements to their particular property, and they really don't know what that process is. And we're trying to help them upfront. What I encourage citizens to do today is, let's sit down and have a pre-meeting. Let's talk about what you're going to really do. And that means, let's talk with the Fire Marshal's Office as well as the Permit Department and the Planning people, and making sure that we're all on the same page. So, that when you leave that particular meeting, you know what that full process is. Because when you go get a permit, sometimes it's got to go back to planning because there's some things within that particular permit that are not allowed by ordinance. And so, we're going to figure out how, how can we work with the citizen enough to educate them?
You know, as you well know, planning is one of those issues, say like short-term rentals, that really inflames people's passions. And it's just one of the issues that inflames people's passions that the council must deal with. Has there been any specific issue that as a council member that has surprised you about how volatile it ended up being and how strongly people felt about it?
Well, one of them was that we dealt with back in the summer. And that was, a lady wanted to have a dog grooming business that was near a residential area. And from my perspective, I saw no issues with this because it was within approximately 500 feet of the residential area. And what I heard from citizens is that they absolutely did not want to have it. So, that particular meeting kind of surprised me. Short-term rentals will probably continue to be one of those issues that will have a lot of emotion. Any team that you've got something that maybe have to do with water and spending may become something that you're going to get questions from citizens. And so, I think those things probably are, are probably the ones that I will continue to watch. Looking at an agenda, I can gently tell approximately how long it's going to be on the council dais, so.
So, you know, some people grouse that the southwest side of the city gets all the new development and all the attention and love from city government. What role does city government play, or should play, when it comes to the businesses deciding where they set up shop?
Well, city probably, the only thing I want to know from the city standpoint is, is that they make sure that as they go through the building process, they comply with all the ordinances and everything like that. I don't know that the city really needs to be in the business of pointing to a specific area of, say, that this is where you need to do this. I think when you, when you do that, you limit people coming to San Angelo. When you limit people coming to San Angelo means that your sales tax are down, which means that if you're going to operate the city the same way as you've been operating it, you may have to look at property taxes, one of those things. So, I want businesses and new companies and companies that are here to expand, I want them to do it wherever they want to do it in the community, as long as they do it by ordinance.
You live in District 3. Do you think, from your vantage point, that the southwest part of the city gets any sort of preferential treatment compared to your part of town?
Well, you know, I've talked to citizens all the time about that. Why did we have a new HEB that was already in the same vicinity as the old HEB? Why couldn't they put one on the east side of town? Okay, let me tell you, where is the property that you're going to allow that particular company to access in order to do that? More property is available on the southwest portion of the town. That's why the majority of the businesses go there. And I'll have to say this, I make a trip all the way across town to HEB, or to Sims, or wherever. So, you know, not in my district, but the, they're doing a very, very good job for the, for the entire community.
And so, when you talk about district versus the good of the community, as a council member, how do you weigh your vote in determining what's best for your district versus maybe some greater good that serves the larger community?
You know, it's interesting you should say that because sometimes I get citizens from my district will say, well, you voted a certain way. I don't know that I would have voted that way. And I simply say, what's best for the entire community? So, what's best for people in District 5 or District 6 probably is, in the long run, is good for the entire city. I was elected by approximately 14,000 people in my particular district. But I serve all the citizens of San Angelo. Every decision I make as a council member impacts somebody within this particular community. And I'm going to look at all 100,000 people as I make decisions. The only, only way that I can, I can look at a particular item or situation is to look for the greater good for the entire community.
Mayor Brenda Gunther has made economic development the centerpiece of her platform and of her service. What has San Angelo done right in your mind when it comes to attracting new industry and more jobs?
Well, really, the industrial park is a key example. We had a building that sat out there for 10 years. And that particular building now is being occupied by a business from San Angelo. We've got businesses that are expanding in the industrial park. We're looking at expanding some, some businesses at the airport. So, I think when you do that, you have that opportunity to have greater impact on sales tax and also some property tax, which lessens the burden on the individual citizen. So, I very much would like to do that. I'm going to love to see some of the new businesses actually come downtown. With all the empty buildings we've got down there, I'd like to, like to see some impact in downtown area.
Well, you actually led directly into my next question. You're an advocate for downtown, and your district encompasses much of downtown. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this interview, you've been a longtime supporter of Fort Concho. What more would you like to see happen, both in the central business district and at San Angelo's number one tourist attraction?
Well, downtown, for example, I think we, if we can find more housing downtown, call them lofts, apartments, whatever you want to call them, then I think what you're going to start to see is you're going to see something that happens in the Dallas area and some of these larger cities. And that is, you have everything you need downtown. If I was a young man, not married, I'd live downtown. You have all the nightlife you need. You have a hospital within two blocks. You have a grocery store within three blocks. You have all the restaurants you need. Guaranteed, today, a young person in their late 20s and early 30s would find the downtown area in San Angelo to be something very, so, I like, want to put some more apartments, lofts downtown. And I think that will help with attracting some additional businesses down there. When it comes to the fort, fort is certainly one of the things that I love. I was on this fort board for six years, two years as board president. I like to see the improvements in the fort every day. Of course, we've got citizen money, a half-cent sales tax money that we're going to invest in barracks one and two to improve the visitor center and to help with the collections area. We've got a citizen now that is, has invested. We've got a citizen now that has invested a couple of million dollars for the rebuild of barracks 3 and 4. We've got private money going into the rebuild for the maintenance on Officer's quarters number 1. And that's, all of that money is private money. So, public-private partnerships are key to the success of fort, and it'll continue to be that way. Matter of fact, I would hold the fort up as an example for other places in the community to look at doing something very similar.
You serve on the council, you've served on the fort board, you're very active in United Way and the Boys and Girls Club, I know the Elks Club as well. What motivates you to be so integrally involved in our community?
Service, I think. And it actually started at a very young age. And I'm going to give a shout-out to the Boy Scouts. You know, I was a Cub Scout, and I spent a lot of time in the Boy Scouts. Service to me is very, very important. I spent eight years in the Air Force, served the country, served citizens in that particular capacity. When I went to work for Goodyear, for the first 20 years, I didn't have that opportunity. But once I moved into the management area, I was able then to say, hey, I want to give back. So I've been on a number of nonprofits, as you say. And when I decided to run for city council, it was really only taking the service that I was doing for a few people and moving it to 100,000 people. Today, I still think that that's probably key to the success, not only of individual organizations, but also to the city, those people that have a giving heart.
And according to something that you said a little earlier, it sounds like that you're interested, once your term ends now, to running for another four-year term?
I am planning on it, as a matter of fact. I wouldn't throw my hat in the ring right now, but quite honestly, next spring, I'll be ready to do this. With some of the success that I've had, I think I've got a great opportunity. I know that you can't please everybody every time, but I have taken care of a number of citizens in this particular community, and I think that the support will be there to allow me to take another shot at this.
So what do you like about serving on the city council?
Well, you know, the neat thing about it is, is the interaction with the citizens. Even though you'll get a phone call occasionally where somebody's not happy, in the long run, when you sit down and have that conversation with them, and listen to what they've got to say, and then you sit down and explain why things can't be done that particular way, or explain the ordinance, more likely, they're going to decide, hey, nobody's ever taken the time to sit down and have that conversation with me. So typically, I'm not going to get that repeat from that particular citizen, and they may have another question, but at least they'll pick up the phone and call me, or send me an email. It's not as if they're out there complaining to other citizens that they can't contact, you know, their council member.
So if people want to contact you about whatever the case might be, what's the best way to do that?
Well, they can do it by email, and it's harry.thomas@cosatx.us. Or they can phone me on the city phone at 325-301-2584. And I carry that phone with me all the time, except on weekends. I only look at it a couple of times a day on a weekend. But typically, I've got it with me, so, you know, they can contact me at any time.
Councilman, we appreciate you being with us, and we hope you'll join us for the next episode of The City.